Best regard. I know. And then I also, but I'm assuming if I would have responded, then they, then I would have got sent. Luckily, I communicated with you enough to know.
May he please come to word and say his pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, there are two names here that we'd like to speak during fellow input. Steve Borrell.
Madam Mayor, my name is Steve Borrell. I live at 430 West Garfield, and I knew your dad. He was one of my teachers. That was a while back, and we just moved back recently. I apologize that I didn't get, I guess I'd say I didn't get the idea until too late for the, for the agenda because, and Madam Mayor, if it's okay, I have copies for people. Sure. Let me just pass those down. The John W. Peterson turns 100 years old on the first of November. And the, there was a program at, during Hildings Fest in Bethany Church, and it was a tribute to his music. And I didn't realize until then that he had just, that he would be 100 years old. And so I had a copy of his book, and it turns out my mother was a cousin of his, first cousin of his. And, and so I, I put this resolution together. It's attached to the front sheet, of course, of the request for agenda item, and you'll see that hopefully next time you meet. But in any case, I wanted to give you a heads up on it, and there's the tribute, and of course, it needs to be changed. That's what you do. And he was a pilot during World War II, flew China Burma Hum. He, he came back, and I guess the thing about it is, he, he wrote over a thousand pieces of music during his lifetime. And he wrote 35 cantatas. He was known all over the world. His music is still presented all over the world, and his cantatas are also. And, but anyway, it just seemed like with, with him coming from Linsburg. He was born south of town, and, and I have, the, the book has a picture of this, this house. It was on farm, obviously, but can't figure out where it was. And I've shown it to lots of people, and nobody recognizes the house. So, but it was, it was clearly where he was born. In the Depression, I knew from my mother that he, he was often farmed out to other families, because he was the youngest of about, I don't know, seven or eight kids. And they could not afford, if you will, to feed him, take care of him. And so every summer, he would come down here with an aunt and uncle and spend his summers here. They moved to Salina when he was five or six years old. And, and the reason for that was so his mother could get a job, and she had a job as a, as a janitor in a church. And she worked there like 20 years or so. But in any case, I have, you know, the documentation I've shown on there is the attached tribute. And if you were to search on W., John W. Peterson, you'll get hundreds of hits on the internet. And his son-in-law, Tom Cartez, is the manager of John W. Peterson Music. He's in their offices in Scottsdale, Arizona. That's where John lived the last few years of his life. And I passed, I sent this to him, and he said, yeah, he said, it's all accurate. So, but anyway, what I hoped was that we, if we could get passed before, and, and get announced and broadcast widely, it provides another, another picture for Linsburg, another opportunity to show the world what Linsburg is. And, and, and I think I, I talked to Holly about it after I'd come in and seen the clerk, and, and these ideas that I had put on here, she thought were right on target, to get them, get it distributed widely. And again, I would, I would submit to you it'd be great to have it done before the date, and that way it could be spread out as wide as possible. In any case, thank you so much for the time, and sorry I didn't get this thought up sooner.
Thank you very much. The next person is Alan Anderson.
Well, I know I'm a little late for Hillings Fest, but I want to thank Madam Mayor and City Council, all the police department, as the former co-chairman of that. What you guys do to make the weather so great, I haven't pretty been out yet, but it was fantastic. I just want to compliment all of you and your staff. You really powered your nose of Linsburg. It looked great for people coming to town. And I thank you all very much for that effort. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there any amendments to be made? We're looking for the amendments, okay. All right, well, I will follow up with what Alan had to say, and I did want to say congratulations to the Hillings Fest Committee. I'm looking out there at some of these city staff people who are all heavily involved. Chief, it was his first go-around, so hopefully we won't run him off if anyone comes back. But it was a fabulous event. Just, I mean, it's hard to, these superlatives are easy to say. So, thank you to everybody, and a special thank you to our city crew. They were fabulous. And Hillings Fest does not happen without that. So, Chris, and I think maybe they brought some lunch or something?
They did, yes.
Okay, good, good. So.
Very good.
Thanks very much for that. Couple of announcements. One is, there is a new organization that will be starting this coming Sunday. It's the Smoky Valley Community Chamber Orchestra. This is a new orchestra. It is going to be giving their, they are going to be giving their first concert this Sunday at the Swedish Pavilion. Kay Quinn, if anybody hasn't met Kay Quinn yet, at the Smoky Valley, at the Old Mel, she is all over this. And so I think this is going to be the beginning of a really cool idea. And so anyway, it's at 3:30 in the Swedish Pavilion. It is free, open to the public. I want to also ask, because there is a parent of a volleyball player, Rebecca, we won't meet again as a council, so you guys just kind of fill us up, fill us in on when everything is going to be happening, because our high school volleyball team is fabulous.
The sub-state tournament is this weekend. I'm, I'm feeling a little shell-shocked, but yes, this weekend is sub-state, and so then we hope to come successfully out of that, and then the state tournament would be the next weekend.
And sub-state is where?
It is in Hallstead.
So that's not that far away?
We will be the top seed in our sub-state and hope that we can, like I said, don't want to get ahead of ourselves.
That's right. And I don't want to put the whammy on you.
That's very beautiful. It's called the mayor's curse.
But it's, it's a lot to be proud of.
It's certainly, it's very entertaining to watch, but also available on livestream, live at smokyvalley.org.
Well, I guess the state stuff you have to dive by.
Once they get to state, even the sub-state. Somebody might sneak a phone in.
Okay.
Other than that, it has to be on the internet.
Well, that's really exciting. It's very exciting for, for girls and for our schools and for our community, so I wanted to pay a special attention to that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
That's all I have. Does anybody else have any announcements they would like to have made? All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All right, Roxy?
Ema?
Yes.
Rebecca? Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Lane?
Jody?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. Are there any appointments?
No appointments.
Anything from honey and zone?
Nothing to report.
All right. Old business, public safety. I think we talked about this last time, right?
We did.
Okay.
That was pre-balance, that's all.
Okay.
So I don't want to go over the whole thing and bore you guys again, but at your request, you tabled it, asked that I go back and talk to the one company that did not provide a quote for the replacement furnace as well. And at the request of the city attorney, I also reached out to the other two and offered them an opportunity if they wanted to review theirs and add or change anything to make it equal to everybody. That being said, I've provided both quotes for just the air conditioner repair or both, and I put that in the recommendation, so we could either, if you're choosing to approve just the air conditioning repair in the amount of $5,520, or we could do both in the amount of $7,193 from, both came in cheaper from Pestinger. I know some of your questions were also, how fast could they get it in? Both Pestinger and CNL were, said they could do it within several weeks. I get the name right. Comfort. Comfort said it would likely be the first of the year, maybe early December, but nothing similar to that.
All right. So at this time, the motion is to approve what?
It would either be the, to replace the air conditioner by itself, or both the air conditioner and the furnace, and the amounts listed in the report.
Through Pestinger?
Through Pestingers.
All right. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the purchase of both in the amount of $7,193 from Pestinger.
Your second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
Do we need to remove anything off the table that the motion was tabled last time?
Well, technically, the item was tabled. The motion was withdrawn, but it was tabled, so yeah, that needs to be removed from the table, then a new motion to approve. So somebody needs to make a motion to remove it from the table.
Your motion?
So moved.
Go.
Second.
Thank you very much.
Is that Lane? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Lane and Pitt, yes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those? It's off the table. Now, the motion that we just talked about. Do we start all from here? Do I hear a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve the purchase of both items, furnace and air conditioning, in the amount of $7,193 from Pestingers.
Your second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Okay, so now that I've made the motion to do both, do we have money to pay for both?
That's right.
Yes. I think it makes sense to do that, to do it all together. We're looking for efficient units, I'm sure, in those cases, so I think it makes sense.
Uh, furnace, no. You can get, 20 years ago, you can get 80% efficient units. That's why all these units are quoted on a furnace.
Any other discussion? Roxy?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. New business, Linsburg Library 15 Year Plan, Rick.
Thank you for having me tonight. And first, I wanted to extend massive thank you for approving our request for increased funding to be included in the 2022 budget. That's greatly appreciated. So in your packets, you should have the 15 Year Plan draft that the library board is currently reviewing. It starts with our library vision, describing what it will look like if the library does its job perfectly, welcoming community residents and visitors of all ages to be engaged in pursuit of lifelong learning, to educate, enrich, explore, and enjoy. When we were doing the strategic planning that led to this plan, the first resource we consulted was the city's comprehensive plan. We generated a list of how the library could partner in achieving those goals and objectives that the city has chosen for needful growth in the next 20 years. And that list was in turn considered when we were choosing the goals for the library's plan. The library also received a $3,000 grant earlier this year from the American Library Association, Libraries Transforming Communities, Focus on Small and Rural Libraries Grant Program. As part of that grant project, the library held two community conversations in July to discuss the question, how can our library serve our community in the next 15 years? Both sessions had active participants involved in discussing what they appreciate, appreciate about the library currently, and where they would like to see growth and expansion. Since the grant made it possible to immediately get started with what community members considered most important, we also asked the question, if you could spend $1,000 on the library today, how would you spend it? So based on the responses we received this summer, we have added more DVD documentaries, graphic novels for teens and tweens, educational toys for zero to five, phonics activity kits, and new nonfiction for the Heritage of Collections. Community members also brought up important projects for growth that went beyond the scope of what could be immediately covered by the ALA grant, so those felt needs were considered for goals in the 15 Year Plan. That plan includes eight goals for growth to be achieved or in process by 2035. Each of the goals has a brief description of the current status of that aspect of the library, the reason why it's important, and what will be done to achieve that goal. The goals include, in 2035, the library has sustainable funding sources that support providing full library services that meet best practice standards of excellence. In 2035, the library has the necessary staff team required to meet community desires for open hours, patron services, and programming events. In 2035, the library building has the necessary facility components in order to function well as a community service organization. In 2035, the library both celebrates Linsburg's Swedish heritage and welcomes the diverse ethnic identities in our community and our world. In 2035, the library provides valuable program services to support lifelong learning from our youngest babies to our oldest senior citizens. In 2035, the library is a well-known entity in the community. Residents and visitors know where the library is, what services are available for them, and view the library as a source of value added to our community. In 2035, the library has easily accessible written copies of complete administrative policies and essential information to facilitate the smooth operation of the library. And in 2035, the library celebrates its 75th birthday, celebrating 75 years of excellent library service to the Linsburg community. So, in summary, the library provides important services to our community. Over the next 15 years, our goal is to continue to expand and adapt services to better meet the needs of our patrons. As I mentioned earlier, it is a planned draft that's currently being reviewed by the library board. If you have input that you want to be considered before it's approved, the library board members are Judy Murphy, Warren Hat, Mary Parker, Marilyn Burrell, Genevieve Bishop, Gary Harder, and Matt Fannestill. Board meetings are usually the fourth Tuesday at 4:00, but because of scheduling conflicts this month, the next board meeting is November 2nd. Do you have any questions?
I would like to commend you and your board on all the work that you've done. This is just fantastic, and I love that you've gotten community input on how to update the materials in the library. So you've made yourself a great resource in the community, so thank you.
Thank you.
I attended one of the sessions, and it was just wonderful. There were so many people there that I didn't even know who they were. And a couple people made the comment, they moved here when they found out we had a public library. So maybe we need to be truly informed more about that.
Yes.
But anyway, congratulations to you and your board for doing a lot of good work.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Yep. All right. Next item, health insurance renewal.
The City of Linsburg sponsors a health and church program. It's a partially self-funded program. It would use a third-party administrator. And we self-insure between deductibles and a backstop coverage. This year, a more significant increase than we've experienced. We've averaged about a 2%, 3% increase per year in our costs since about 2013. We were looking at close to an $80,000 jump over 21 for the 22-year. So we participated in a program with the Kansas Municipal Insurance Trust as they looked at health insurance options for members of the Health Insurance Trust as association pool, and we used those as comparisons to our current program in terms of both coverage and cost. For example, our program has a $3,600 deductible, co-insurance of $1,400, $2,800, and then the maximum out-of-pocket cost for, for, for an employee would be $1,700, $3,400. Under the closest program through the health, or through the Municipal Insurance Trust, through the association pool, was deductible of $500,000, a co-insurance of $1,000, $2,000, and the total out-of-pocket cost of $5,000, $10,000. From a, from a total cost standpoint, let me scroll down to that real quick here. It wasn't until you look at the high deductible programs, and when they say high deductible, that the costs were competitive with what we have, they're partially self-funded. The high deductible through the association pool would be a $5,000, $10,000 high deductible on one option, and 6,350, or 12,700, and that's the maximum out-of-pocket. To give you an idea of total cost, $560,100 through the self-insured program, to the most similar program to what the city offers now, would be $602,413.44. And it's not until you get to the high deductible program of $456,163.56 that the cost is less than what the city currently offers. One of the things that has been driving, or has driven, the cost increase for 2022 is prescription coverage, recommending that prescriptions for generics go from $10 to $15, from non-brand, or I'm sorry, brand formularies from $30 to $45, and non-brand formularies from $45 to $100. The last time the employee contribution was increased towards the cost of health insurance was 2013, also recommending an increase to employees' contribution towards health insurance to $95 for single coverage, $200 for employee spouse, $175 for employee child children, or, and family coverage of $250. And so that is the recommended motion to approve the umbrella health insurance and dental coverage with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. It's actually a $7,000, $14,000 backstop coverage, and for the employee contribution to health insurance to increase for employee coverage to $95 a month, employee spouse $200 a month, employee child children $175 a month, and family $250 a month. Additionally, the prescription copays increase for generics to $15, $45 for brand formularies, and $100 for non-brand formularies. The estimated total cost for this program is $409,000. It was budgeted for this year at $5,539, so it is under budget.
I miss the motion?
Yes. Motion to approve.
Thank you. Your second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay. Here in none. Roxy?
Rebecca?
Yes? Ema?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Next item.
All right. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. The Community Development Department is seeking approval to renew the Luminous Neon billboard. This billboard is located southbound between Salina and Linsburg with a monthly cost of $385, for a total annual cost of $4,620. This billboard provides great visibility and promotion for Linsburg, and has the potential to attract new residents while improving the image of the community. So I don't know if any of you have been, if any of you have been driving from Salina to Linsburg, and you've seen across the road the billboard that says Creative Community Inspired Ideas and has the city logo, that's the billboard. So fundamentally, why I think this is important is it provides a different, a different value than, say, the visit Linsburg billboards that we already have. So those are primarily about promoting tourism, whereas this is about promoting Linsburg as a good place to live, a great place to work, a place to raise a family, and a place to make a life. So I think in that way, it's very important and has a lot of potential to, to attract new residents. So anyway, the Community Development Department is seeking approval, again, for the renewal of the Luminous Neon Agreement for the southbound billboard between Salina and Linsburg with a monthly cost of $385, for a total annual cost of $4,620.
Do I hear a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Second? Second. Three. Discussion? So is it going to be the same picture?
So right now, it'll be the same, but the intention is to get a new vinyl wrap. But we're in the process of procuring design for that, so.
So there'll be an additional cost then for the?
So for this one, for this one, the design and the wrap are actually included in the contractual fees, so it's not an additional cost.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? Discussion?
I think it's a good point that you made, that this is something that helps develop and attract the community and potentially new members of our community, it's a little bit different than tourism, so I think it's good. And it is very visible.
Any other comments? Roxy? Lane?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Ema?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Motion is approved? Next item?
All right. Take two. The Community Development Department is seeking approval to renew the Lamar billboard. So this billboard is located northbound between McPherson and Linsburg with a monthly cost of $271, for a total annual cost of $3,252. This is the same billboard. It's the exact same wrap currently, and for the same reasons, promoting the community as a place to live, a place to work, raise a family, and make a life. I think it's important. Again, we're looking to rebrand this billboard as well. It'll be the same design as the Luminous Neon, but again, we're in the process of procuring that design.
Why are we using two different companies?
Is that on the billboard? Are they on the billboards?
Yeah, yeah.
On the billboards?
Yep. Different billboard, advertising companies.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Right. Can you, discussion?
I honestly can't believe billboards are still a thing, but it's amazing to me how many people will say they came here because of that. I mean, we even heard people say they moved here because they stopped after looking at a billboard, and so they still work.
Yeah, they do. Any other comments? Roxy?
Rick?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Ed.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes.
Ema.
Yes.
Motion is approved. Thank you, Jordan. All right. Next item.
Mayor, move that we go into executive session to discuss matters related to non-직원 personnel pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1 for 15 minutes. The open meeting will resume at, what is it, 7:30?
No. 7:15.
7:15. I have 30 minutes. 7:15.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Come, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post?
I saw you up there. Nosebleed section.
How are you?
Good. No, okay. Good. Yep. Well, I just wanted to give you a little bit of insight about it, and, yeah. Yeah. If she could get much advertising out, well, on the first, it'll be that. Yeah. Yeah. I couldn't identify you, but I can see you.
Oh, gosh.
He's pretty quiet. It wouldn't have been a very good game.
No. Not at all. Oh, well.
Yeah.
Where you been?
I've been doing well.
Yeah? No, I would agree with the comment. The city troops, they just did a super job. And, mark the payment two months in advance, whenever they start, it was a long way along. I go, oh, yeah, that's what they're doing. Getting ready for it.
You did a good job.
Yeah. You did a great job. Yeah, I think so. Didn't see them working on it, but they're, you know, when they were working on some of those bricks, a couple different places. There's one where you come out of the, yeah, see you later.
See you later.
What you call, come out of the post office, okay, to Lincoln. There was one right there that I was watching cars go up and down. They must have fixed it, because I hadn't noticed it now.
Well, they're not done. Chris tells me they're not done. They're still going to do some yet this fall, so, yeah.
There's probably lots more.
There are plenty more.
Sorry, are you sure?
Yeah.
We'll see.
All right. Thanks.